Right, it is seven o'clock, so we're gonna call to order the common council meeting for Platteville on January eighth, 2019, and we'll start with roll call.
Robin Klein?
Here.
Don Francis?
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Sina Sharp is absent. Barbara Doss?
Here.
First item on the agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. First item is council minutes from our December eleventh meeting. B is payment of bills. Excuse me. C is financial report for December. D is appointments to boards and commissions. I have none this evening, but we do have some openings, so if someone out there is interested in serving on a city board commissioner committee, please contact, actually, the city clerk would be a good person to contact, and there's information online as well, platteville.org. Licenses, one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol, and also taxi driver license, and a banner permit for the Platteville Fire Department pancake breakfast, April first through the fifteenth.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion is second, and we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
If anyone does like to or would like to make comments on either this at this time or if there's an issue later on our agenda, then I will ask you to come up and speak at that time, and I know we have one person, but if there's anybody else that was going to plan to speak, please fill out this form and give it to our city clerk. I have no one who's asked to speak for citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. Under reports in our packet, we have water and sewer commission, Killian, Stockhausen, and Sharp.
Nothing to add.
No addition.
Zoning Board of Appeals, Doss?
Nothing.
Housing Authority Board, Killian?
No addition.
Library Board, Klein?
No addition.
Airport Commission, Doss?
Nothing.
Community Safe Routes Committee, Francis?
No addition.
Museum Board, Stockhausen?
Nothing to add.
And Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition.
Other reports in our packet, the water and sewer financial report for December, also the December airport financial report, department progress reports. Anyone have any questions on any of those reports? All right, hearing none, we'll go into our action item, which is Resolution eighteen twenty-nine, updating the fee schedule.
All right, so the staff annually reviews the fees charged by the City of Platteville for various licenses, permits, inspections, programming, et cetera, and these are the suggested changes that are listed here on the note that I prepared for you guys, and if you'd like to, you can follow along with the fee schedule that is attached, which is right here. So page three is going to be the first change. I removed bike license from the administration department and put it under the police department. The bike registrations are handled with the police department, so it fit better in that area. Walk/Run was added along with parade permits. The charge and form for these permits is the same and should be listed together. On page four, under the section Ordinance Reference, Resolution eleven seventeen was removed, as this is an outdated resolution and is no longer relevant. On page five, zoning permit with a fee of $25 was added under occupancy permit. All rental license fees were removed as they are no longer used. Page nine, the note of with an active membership in the Friends of the Mining and Rollo Jameson Museum was no longer relevant and was deleted. And the final change is on page ten, rental fees for the auditorium and common council chambers have been changed and package prices have been added. Staff recommends approval of the attached resolution amending the City of Platteville fee schedule for the year of 2019. Any questions?
And is there a motion to approve the fee schedules proposed?
I would approve Resolution eighteen twenty-nine.
Second.
Amending the City of Platteville fee schedule for 2019.
I second.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is information and discussion items, and the first is ordinance nineteen oh one, no parking on Camp Street.
Yes. Platteville School District and city staff met to discuss the traffic congestion near Westview School on Camp Street during drop-off and pickup times for children attending the school. Among the concerns was that parents would park on the north side of Camp Street to wait for their child, and then they would be encouraged to dart out into traffic crossing the street to their parents, causing a safety concern. Based on this, the school district requested that the city staff bring a proposal to the common council to prohibit parking on the north side of Camp Street. Staff sent letters to residents. I have an enclosed map showing the area affected, basically from Kelly to Western Avenue on Camp Street. We have installed signposts in the event that common council approves the ordinance. If we do end up having winter conditions where we have frost in the ground, it would have been much more difficult to put those posts in the ground, but if the ordinance does not pass, posts can be removed in the spring. And what the ordinance would do is prohibit parking between 7:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. on any day school is in session, and that's similar to the way that we have it on Second Street across from middle school. So it's something that we do in other places.
Questions for Howard?
So the proposal is just for this no parking on the north side. There is nothing more to this proposal?
That's correct.
And it's for all day, not just during the times that there's congestion?
That's correct.
I thought it was like 7:30, 4:30?
7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Any day school is in session.
Questions? We do have two people who have asked to speak, so Luanna Doeman?
I live on the...
Yep, if you will come to the microphone and give your name and address, that helps us with our record-keeping.
I'm Luanna Doeman. I live at twelve ten Camp Street. I oppose the no parking for the full day. There's about a twenty-minute time in the morning that it's busy, and about a twenty-minute time in the afternoon that it's busy. That eliminates parking for any guests that we have all day. I also wonder, how do you handle the snow problem? If you would need to park on the opposite side of the street, what do you do when there's no parking on one side? How do you deal with that? So who answers these questions?
Howard, would you answer the question about snow removal?
Snow removal is normally done in the evenings and the early mornings prior to school, and so folks would still be subject to the normal alternate-side parking rules at night, and then at 7:30 in the morning, when school is in session, if school is not canceled because of a snow event, then they would need to be moved off of that north side if the ordinance were passed.
I'm very opposed to the ordinance of no parking, so I will leave it at that.
Thank you.
Hi, Carol Beals, forty-five Commerce Street. I take my kids to school there, my grandkids to school there, two to three times a week, and it is nothing but a cluster mess. Removing parking on the north side of the street is not going to solve any problem whatsoever. They're just going to continue to pull into a parking lot that now they think they can have directional traffic in. They can prohibit left-hand turns off of Camp Street into the parking lot, which I'm not sure how they think that's solving anything. If you've been out there since school started in January, now the line, instead of just being clustered in front of the school, is all the way to Camp Street and partially down Western Avenue, and if you happen to forget and come the wrong way around, you have to go all the way around, make a turnaround, and come back on Western Avenue, and the traffic that wants to pass through is still sitting there waiting and waiting and waiting. So having no parking on the north side of the street is not going to solve anything. Little kids are still getting out on the driver's side passenger door, whether they're in the parking lot, whether they're on the street. If mom or dad's in a hurry, they're dropping them off on the corner of Western Avenue and having the little squirts run all the way down the street to get to school. They're dropping them off at the other parking lot where buses are coming and going. Prohibiting traffic on Camp Street's not going to solve this problem at all. This requires some thought about dismissal times at the school. It should not be a city council problem. It should be a school board problem. They should not be dumping their business on you. You guys should be concerned about impeding traffic on Camp Street during those hours. You should not, traffic is at a standstill. God forbid if some little kid does get hit, there's no way an ambulance or a rescue team can get there to help them. It is bumper to bumper, going nowhere in both directions. Prohibiting parking will not solve anything, so I strongly oppose this resolution, and I would invite you to go there, not at 7:30 in the morning, but from 10 to eight until 10 after eight, and from three o'clock until 3:30, or even 3:10, probably 3:10, 3:15 to 3:30. Watch the buses, watch the traffic. You have first through fourth grades there. They're too little to be unaccompanied, but you have to have a drop-off section, and it's not working. The new system's not working, and I would think the city council would be greatly opposed to blocking traffic, which is what is happening. I understand it's only a twenty-minute period of time, twice a day, but blocking traffic and having it come to a standstill prohibits anybody from getting any kind of rescue help whatsoever through there. There's no place to take it. Now, they have cones in the middle of the street, and you're allowing cones while I want to park in front of my house, so can I go out and put a cone there? That's not going to help the situation. A cone, now they're coming west on Camp Street. They realize they can't make a left-hand turn into the parking lot, so they're coming around, and they're doing a Y-turn at the end of the cones, and then coming back so they can make a right-hand turn into the parking lot. We have solved nothing with the redirection of traffic there, and as a matter of fact, it's my opinion that we've made it worse. So let's not compound a bad situation by making parking on the north side of the street prohibited. That might be the only place you can sneak through with your vehicle. That's, it's, I guarantee you, go and see it once.
Thank you. So those are the only two requests to speak on the subject. Any council questions, discussion at this point?
I do have a couple of questions. Carol has mentioned that there's no left-hand turn into the parking lot. Is that a city sign, or is that, I mean, how, I mean, I don't recall that we had a no-left-hand turn there.
There is no ordinance regarding that. That's a temporary, temporary action that the school district did in consultation with city staff. They put out cones during the pickup and drop-off times to attempt to prohibit those left turns, but there is no ordinance on that, and they're not, they're not, they're not...
There's no law.
They're not requesting that either.
So they're not, so then that would disappear?
I don't know what their plan is. We did invite members of the school district to attend. They had other commitments tonight, but they intend to have a representative here at the next council meeting when this comes up for potential action to address any concerns that you may have regarding this.
Is there parking on the south side of Camp Street?
Yes.
So this is a request only to prohibit, so right now people can park on that south side all the way?
Yes.
I have been through there during this time period. I agree, it's a nightmare. I don't know why I turned on that street at that time. Was not a good choice. I mean, and, you know, in Platteville, we have a traffic jam every once in a while in a little place, but, you know, you should do your best to avoid those little spots, I guess. And so these cones are, is there a community service officer on duty at that area on a daily basis during these times? I mean, I know we have a community service officer that's available, I think, up by the roundabout or at...
We don't have one at the roundabout typically.
Not anymore, but we used to have, before there was a roundabout, we used to have a community...
We used to have officers.
An officer there.
Yep. And reference this, right now, we have not had community service officers up there during the first week that it was done, Wednesday through Friday. We had an officer or two in the area to assist with the education process of the changes that have been implemented. Right now, we don't have much in the way of CSOs. Well, typically, they're college kids, and so that they're on break right now.
There hasn't traditionally been one at Westview?
No.
There's one out on the highway for crossing, but not managed traffic.
Right.
Is that a crossing guard or a CSO?
Either a CSO or an officer.
On Camp Street?
Right.
So there's no crossing guard anymore?
We don't have any, no. It's typically staffed by an officer or CSO.
And the school district doesn't provide crossing guards?
We have a cost sharing for that with the school district, fifty-fifty.
The no-left-hand turn now at Westview School and also cones have been mentioned. Is there any other changes that have been implemented, tried right now?
They have, the school district has tried to make some adjustments in the flow internally in the lot itself.
But as far as the street or turning or anything like that, there's nothing else involving the city street at this time?
Are there any other solutions that have been posed to the safe routes or by the school district?
We met with them, like Howard said, and these were the, this was the outcome of that meeting.
And do the buses line up on the street, or do the buses...
Parking lot. I can tell you for a fact, since I was a bus driver for five years, that is an awful area for a bus, but you only have ten minutes to get in and out of that parking lot, and I don't know who gets in the way of those buses, but there's very little respect for the buses in that parking lot, so that's something else that needs to be considered, because you do have to make a left turn and then make a right turn to get in and out of that parking lot.
It's not pictured on the aerial photo that is in your packet, but as part of the new work that was done at Westview School, there's a separate area, and that's where the buses go, on the east side, on the east side of the building.
So this is an old photograph?
Yes.
So when they, so when they come in, then they, where do they make the right and left turn to go back to the middle school? If they have a parking lot there on the east side?
The buses, the buses turn into that lot on the east side, go into the parking lot, either drop off or pick up children, and then come out, and they make a right-hand turn and go down Camp Street, go out Camp Street to the east.
So there's no parking there with families? No private vehicles in that turnaround where the buses go? So that's fortunate, if it's just buses.
No, it's a staff parking lot.
So I have a child that goes to Westview, and I have some knowledge of this, and I agree with the residents at, and picking up children, that this has not been a well-thought-out change, and this is only the fifth day of it. It started last Wednesday.
What, you mean the no-left turn or the no parking?
The new traffic pattern started on Wednesday.
Which is the no-left turn?
The no-left turn, if you're traveling westbound on Camp?
Okay.
That you're now supposed to somehow get to Western, which is either taking Main Street by the campus to get to Western, or go through Union through that as well, and we don't know how that is going to really affect the traffic overall for the city, because the campus is not in session right now. So thousands of students are not here either, and not everyone on campus is showing up. So we also don't have an idea about how this changes things overall. Now, back to how they want to change the traffic to Westview itself, I'm not sure taking away parking on the north side really, well, we don't, we don't know how it really does. It's only the fifth day of it, you know? In some ways, a safe zone could have been created because of this, making it more or less a one-way from the west, that people should park on the north side, and that could be another way to get your child. I don't like the idea or the verb darting out, because these kids aren't darting out. They know that they're in traffic. They know that's all around them, so they're not running around. As far as the buses, I can understand some of their concerns as far as trying to get into their lot, because they have to go in in order. So if the number two or number three bus shows up before the first one, they have to wait on the street until number one shows up to get into the lot. So, and I believe there's either six or seven that have to get there in order, so then they leave in order. So they will, they will queue out on Camp as best they can, and I assume there's some talking on the radio about who's where and whatnot, but otherwise, that can be a problem on that side, definitely. But it's battle stations as far as trying to pick up your child, okay? You're going to take whatever spot you can. So that lot as well, where the buses are supposed to be, and it's supposed to be staff, if there's an open spot, someone's going to take it, okay? Because now you're not on the street. I've done it. It's easy, especially since if it's already, the buses have already left, so now it's an even more clear lot. There haven't been a lot of thought as far as, like, there could be staggered times of some sort for people, for the kids that go on the bus, and kids are getting picked up, and kids are walking, you know, there could have been a lot of other choices or input, more or less. The parents haven't had any input on this. We brought it up as far as the PTO earlier in the fall, and we wanted, we were throwing around ideas, how can we fix pickup? Drop-off is a problem, but it's not as bad as pickup, because pickup is people sit and wait, and they claim their spot, more or less, which is understandable, you, you know, you're trying to pick up your child. But now it's, now it's going to be this kind of pushing it into a line, and again, we have no idea how this really affects anything, so I don't think the no parking, we have no data to say one or the other, that it's useful to do it. It could be not useful, because more or less, we'd take away even more parking from a problem
Any other comments or questions, suggestions?
I only would say that I don't know why it has to be no parking all day. I mean, there are roads in other communities where it says no parking, or no left turn, 7:30 to 9:30, no parking 7 to 9, no parking 3 to 5, or whatever. So I don't think the idea of restricted parking at a certain time of the day is, I mean, I think that should be on the table as well as no parking from 7:30 to 4:30. That would at least help the residents in the area if they are having kind of guests or anything, or people are dropping things off or whatever. I really don't, if the, if the problem is restricted to two time periods, I really don't know why we need to have no parking for this whole time period when, when the problem is kind of here at the end. That's, I mean, I'd like somebody to explain to me why it has to be all day when it's really just two short periods.
Well, it's not. I mean, looking at the ordinance under section one, it does say 7:30 to 4:30. That is the proposal.
Right, but I'm saying, why not 7:30 to 8:30?
Sure.
And 3:30 to 4, or whatever times. I mean, we know what time the school gets out. It shouldn't be hard to...
Well, but school doesn't always get out at that time.
Well, I suppose.
There's early release, or there's weather release, so it's not always going to be at that. Same with arrival, if there's a delayed start, then it's two hours later.
This is on for information discussion. We're not taking action tonight, but I think, you know, it's pretty good input. I don't know it...
So have there been any issues with children? All of you that have been, that use, I mean, I know how difficult it is with a bus. That's all I can say from my perspective, but the parents, the neighbors, have there been problems with children? Have there been close...
There's been fender benders.
Well...
Sir, chief, I don't think there's been any injuries, but...
Not that I'm aware of, no.
But there haven't been accidents.
I'm sorry, Luanna, if you want to make another comment, we're going to have to have you come up to the microphone. I mean, you can certainly do that if you want, but we record it, so that we know.
Well, I can understand what she's trying to say, that more or less, this now changes everywhere, the way that people drive, that they're going to have to, they'll get around whatever way they get around to get to the spot they need to. The most helpful thing that's been with this is that someone is outside from the school. That was normally not the case. So having a presence, and of course, chief can say that, you know, the first three days, he had an officer out there, but they also had two staff members out there. So there was a presence who was talking to drivers and giving them, you know, some idea of where they're going, kind of like, you know, if you're going to a sporting event and you know where to go, follow the cones. But when there isn't a presence, then it's, you know, kind of, some people will follow this new thing, some people get around the way they can get around it. That's probably the most helpful thing in the change.
I'll say, all my years of paying kids up from school, that has been what I wished for more, was that there would be staff at the corner of buildings or at the intersections outside of Neil Wilkins or Westview, just a set of eyes telling kids to stop before they cross the street. So, and to go to such extent to stop parking when the parents are the ones literally standing there waiting for their kid to come across the street, I don't know. This seems like it's us making an effort to do something that parents are, they're there, they have their eyes on their kid. They're either walking across the street to meet their kid, or they trust their kid to know how to cross the street. The only, I would say to her comment about emergency responders being able to get through, if we don't have parking on north, the north side, maybe that would free up space, but I don't know. To me, it's about logistics of where the kids are coming out and meeting their parents and how the traffic is flowing, and I don't, I don't know. Consequencing the neighbors to not be able to park there all day long doesn't seem like the answer.
What about having them cross at the corners?
What corners?
Kel, is it Kelly and, yeah, Kelly, cross there, Kelly and Camp, and Westview and, or Western and Camp, and have them walk up the street to their car.
Or maybe not even at a corner, but right as the, that horseshoe parking lot, if it had a, does it? I don't know that it has crosswalk. It would just be to the other side of the street. There's obviously no street there, but coming out of the corner of the horseshoe parking lot that we flow through, kids are coming either from the bus door or the other door... lot that we flow through, kids are coming either from the bus door or the other door. Is there a crosswalk right there?
No.
Can we, can we teach people to cross the street there instead of just randomly to where their cars are or not?
Well, that's a nice idea, but there's no sidewalk on the other side. So there's crossing a street to then walk in the street. If there was a sidewalk on the north side of Camp, that could be something to work with.
Right, any other questions or comments?
Well, I, I recommend that I go back for discussion with the stakeholders because there's obviously questions here that need to be addressed. I, I don't think we have enough information. We don't have the school dis, school district here, but we have parents, we have neighbors, we have the police department and we're working with incomplete information. We don't have the bus company here. So anyway, I think we don't have enough information to make a decision or even proceed into the, for action.
So you would prefer we not take it up for action next time?
Correct. I prefer that it go into a committee, into a task force, something that it gets reviewed again. Because this is a bad corner. I remember, it wasn't even good in my day and it's, there's more children, they put a whole new section on the school. So anyway, that's what I recommend.
I agree. I think it would be helpful to have someone here from the school district, Barb. I don't know about a task force. It sounds like there's been a kind of a group of school personnel as well as city personnel meeting to discuss this. Karen, is that right?
I, I wasn't part of that discussion, but I believe that the school district has had internal discussions, you know, but part of this operation is on their private property and then that they brought us in to discuss what their, their idea was with respect to implementation on the city side. And then there was the request for the removal of parking off of Camp Street. And so I think two other staff members who were part of that discussion. Is there anything that you would, you would add to that?
No, that's accurate.
So our comments were fairly, really limited to the operation of the street and not necessarily with respect to the school's operation of their parking lots because we are not experts in the types of things that some of the parents here are with respect to the students coming in and out of the building and the operation of the buses.
You said there would be someone from the school district here.
They have committed to be at the next meeting. They just had a conflict this evening that they were not able to attend.
Did this go by safe routes, our committee?
No.
It was.
And could it?
It was spoken about before the, the big meeting had taken place, but we, we're not consulted.
All right, well, what is the desire of the council? Do you want to bring this back for action next time or would you rather have information discussion again?
I think we need information and discussion. There's, like I said, there's too many people involved that need to be, have their voices heard and I think that needs to be done.
I agree. One of the things I brought up was how it changes the traffic throughout the city two times during the day. And since the university's not in session right now, we have no idea how that really affects, like Main Street would be used mostly by parents.
Because of coming onto Western Avenue?
By, that they have to get to Western in some way, shape or form, whether it be Main Street or Union, and those are highly populated areas for the university students.
So you're saying that would happen if parking was removed on the north side? Or is it happening now because of the left-hand turn?
We don't know how it affects because.
Left-hand turn.
The left-hand turn is affecting the traffic?
Since they're saying no left-hand turn, the only way to get to it is you have to take Main Street or Union to get to Western Avenue.
Well, you have to take Western to finally get there, however you get to Western.
More or less, there's only two ways to get to Western from the north, east and south.
Well, this is something I guess we'll be discussing in agenda setting to see whether or not we get any more information. In the meantime, if not, perhaps it won't go back on for action, we'll certainly let people know.
So we'll just let it in the hands of the school district to work on their plans for right now.
Yeah, I do think it would be nice to have a report from them certainly as to why they believe that this is one of the things that would be helpful, why this particular closing of, or no parking that from seven thirty to four thirty. Okay, we're gonna go on to the plan unit development of 545 West Adams Street. Staff presentation on that.
Yes, this is a plan unit development and just so everybody's aware, the plan unit developments are typically approved in two stages. The general development plan kind of gives the overall concept of the project, number of units, type of development, general building layout, density, et cetera. And then if that's approved, the additional details are provided for the specific implementation plan. For this particular project at 545 West Adams Street, the general development plan was approved back in September, basically for the three-unit apartment building, shared driveway coming off of Adams Street. And that part of the project has not changed. The GDP was approved with two conditions. The first one was the limited occupancy residential overlay district shall be applied to the property. And then the second condition was that stormwater will be retained on the site up to a 25-year event in accordance with city ordinances. So that part of it has been approved, so the applicant has submitted some additional information on the project, the refined floor plans, building elevations, redesigned site plan. And since most of the discussion at that first stage or a lot of the discussion was related to stormwater, they have provided the additional stormwater information for this project. The project, the stormwater part of it has been designed by a engineer, Katie Engineering. They've also on the same plan have, even though it wasn't part of the approval, they've provided information on the erosion control measures that will be in place during the construction of the project. But essentially, the, the stormwater plan has a proposed stormwater rain garden detention basin on the west side of the building. The water from the building itself and the driveways, parking area will be directed, directly into that detention area. There's catch basins and inlets to convey the water. Any water coming onto the site from surrounding property owners basically to the south and a little bit from the east will be directed around the building through swales so that, basically that's the water that's already coming off the site. So the pond or the detention area will be designed to accommodate the new runoff coming from the project. One other item that was concerned during the original plan was there was a retaining wall on the north side of the driveway that had tentatively been designed to be located across that easement for the utility easement. So there were some concerns about that if staff, city ever had to get in and do some work, that that would be in the way. So that has been removed. They've eliminated it completely just through recontouring the site, changing the elevations on the, the property. So that has been addressed as well. Otherwise, the, the project is basically in conformance with what was approved for the GDP with just additional details and information. As far as the overlay district, if this part is approved, staff will begin that process and bring that forward for future action. Since they have addressed the conditions of the original approval and the rest of the project is in conformance with what was already approved, staff is recommending approval of the SIP. Any questions?
The sanitary sewer, is that covered at all by any asphalt or concrete from the developer?
It will be covered by a small section of concrete driveway, but we believe that that's, that's not an issue. We have a number of easements and other things where, where we have sanitary, sanitary sewer underneath paved areas, including all, all of our roads. So there, there's not an issue with that.
And eventually, where does the water go from the pond?
The, the outfall from the detention basin goes to the northwest portion of the site into that existing drainage soil that's along the northern boundary of the property.
It'll be beyond the Beals' house?
I'm not sure exactly where the house is located. It'd be as close to the street, I guess, as they, they could get it, so it'd be, probably beyond their house.
Well, on here, it looks like the lot line is actually over the culvert. Is that correct?
The, the property line, yes. That's in, the property line is identified in the certified survey map as being down the center line of that existing concrete that goes down that drainage soil.
So neighbors on one side are responsible and the neighbors in his side as well? He has his own and they have their own for that culvert?
I'm not sure what you mean, they have their own.
Well, then, then one of the neighbors called me and said there was a concern when the floods this summer came that it went over these culverts.
I, I think that was a reference to the quantity of the water itself spills out of the banks, I'm assuming.
Other questions for staff?
Sure. Can somebody explain to me, since I'm not good at reading these maps necessarily, the swales that are gonna be put in on the east side of the lot and the south side of the lot? Where, I mean, this, I see these little lines and this says the swale. So where is, where is the water from the swale on the east side of the lot going to end up?
That would drain to the north and basically run into the, the driveway as it connects to Adams Street and then from Adams Street west into the drainage soil.
But it'll just be open water draining out?
Yes.
There's no catch basin, there's no storm sewer, there's nothing else?
Correct.
And so if it's a great volume of water, I, I don't know what the volume is. But if, if it's a great volume of water, is there?
What, what it is, is it would be, it would be the existing water that right now comes from the lots to the east.
Somebody else's property.
Off of those other properties.
Right.
And right now, what that does is it filters across the grassy lot.
I understand.
And now, according to this proposal, it would divert that water north onto Adam, onto Adams Street. It all goes into the ditch.
Right, but do we have a concern at all that it might wash out the road? It might, I mean, that's our road, right?
Yes, it, it, it's not a significant amount because a lot of that water, it's from the backs of, of these properties to the east and there's not a significant quantity of water from those.
Okay. But we have no, I mean, that, that wasn't his responsible, responsibility to measure the water coming onto his property?
No.
Okay. And the swale on the south side, the water from that goes to the east or to the west?
It goes to the west toward the, and it goes around the end of the, the end of the proposed rain garden pond and into the, into the swale west of where the pond outfall would be.
Okay, so on that, on this particular drawing on the north, on the south side, I see three what's called straw bales. By the way, would we expect those straw bales to, to be there forever?
No.
That's for erosion control during construction.
That's just for erosion control. So does, you're telling me that the swale on the south side of the property will empty to the west of the la, of the third bale?
Yes.
Okay, and then it'll empty down into that concrete ditch?
Yes.
Calling that a concrete ditch? I don't know if that's a concrete ditch. Looks like a concrete ditch to me.
Yes.
Does the, does the concrete ditch belong to the city?
I'm not aware of any storm drainage easements. I do know that in the eighties, I believe it was, that the city did in fact put that concrete drainage ditch in through there.
Was that, was that on the request of the neighbors or just to help with water?
I, I have no idea.
All I know is that I, I have plans from the early eighties that show when that was installed.
And has it ever been, I mean, there's been a lot of development there since the eighties and north of there. Has that ever been increased in size or changed or it's just like it was originally, that concrete ditch?
We have not done anything new with that at the request of neighbors. We've, we've removed some overgrowth, but that's all that we've done as far as I know.
And the, the, there's a, is there a culvert? There's a culvert on Hickory, right?
Yes, there's a culvert that conveys the water underneath Hickory Street.
And has that culvert ever been changed in size since the ditch was put in? Or is it just the same old culvert?
I believe it's the same one. I know that it hasn't been changed since I've been here. And then there's another culvert at the very end of Adams Street where water comes out.
I gotta look at this, at the very end of Adams. Oh, that short little part of Adams Street, at the west end of Adams.
At the west end of Adams.
And that culvert comes from underneath Lancaster Street?
Yes.
Okay, so it comes underneath Lancaster Street from the back of the properties on, between Lewis and Dewey or between Lewis and Adams? Probably between Lewis and Dewey.
It, it's, it's, it comes parallel to Dewey Street from Seventh Avenue in, through the backyards of those houses along Dewey Street. It goes underneath Lancaster Street, underneath yards and driveways and then empties into that concrete ditch at the west end of Adams Street.
Other questions? Otherwise, we do have two people who have asked to make comments. All right, Carol Beals?
Carol Beals, I'm speaking on behalf of Geneva Beals and Beals Trust located at 475 North Hickory Street. The property, the ditch joins mom's land. So when the plan was discussed last night at the planning commission, which by the way, they voted it down, they, the slope runoff, the runoff is still the major, major, major problem here. The slope is extremely, extremely steep. The water's just going to, it has to go around the building. Yes, I agree with you, Joe. It has to go around the building, so it's gonna have to go to Adams Street and dump into the top part of the culvert at the end of Adams Street, which is a 36-inch diameter, I think you'd established last night. And down the ditch and then the whole box tunnel or box culvert that goes underneath Hickory Street is what it empties out onto and goes across over then under Miners Field or the tail end of Miners Field over to Washington. So you got that whole drainage, you know, the whole city drains down in there. So, but the, the steepness of the design of his building now, yeah, he So, um, but the- the steepness of the design of his building now, yeah, he took out the retaining wall, but he only diverted it around his building, and he only diverted the water, so it comes down, runs into his swales, and comes right back down into Geneva's, to the ditch, and therefore then rises and comes into her basement. We have been over this, and over this, and over this, that this is not, if you go and look at the site, physically look at the site, you can go to the end of Adams Street, and then you can go to the bottom of Hickory Street, and look up the ditch, and you'll see that last year, three times during the storms, it went over the banks of the ditch into the middle of the lot between Beals' and Pittington's on the north end, come, or on the, what would that be, on the far end of Adams Street? And it- it crossed over the street on Lancaster Street, and it crossed over the street on Hickory Street. So when you have that amount of water coming down there, and now you're gonna all of a sudden put a building in the middle of it, and you're gonna change the grade, the steepness of the slope, and you're gonna have it all empty into the same spot, you're gonna have the same problem, only exasperated by the fact that it- it, you didn't solve the problem. He's got the water going around his pond, he's got just his, a little bit of water going into his pond, but then he diverts it around the pond and dumps it right back into the drainage ditch, what is then gonna make the far end, the Hickory Street part of the drainage ditch rise that much faster? Pat will speak to some of the other, uh, percentages. Um, he's almost within regulation, he's 78% out of the 80%, he meets the specs. I'm not sure what you guys have for information for their packet, do they have what we had last night? Okay, so, and there it addresses some of the steepness and the part portions that, um, he almost meets the requirements. We've given him numerous exceptions and exemptions, and continue, the neighbors and the neighborhood and the families that live there will continue to, um, express our concern about the runoff, and how it's gonna be handled, or not handled. And in anticipation of having water in the basement, we cleaned out Mom's basement, completely gutted it, and we're ready to install a second sump pump. So if this goes through, that will be our only next option. Um, can't move her house, still haven't found a way to get her to higher ground, and she was, she's been there for, well, she's 89 years old, so she's been there forever, and it's a shame to see this happen to her in her- in her later years of life. Um, it just seems like, um, we- we should've come up with a better solution, or we shouldn't have allowed it in the first place.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week.
Pat Ballway?
Pat Ballway, I reside at 400 Short Street. Went home from the Plan Commission last night and wondered what was bothering me, 'cause it takes me a while to think things through. And what I felt was that we have been deceived, we have been deceiveded by the- by the city employees, because we were told by the city employees, we were told by the developer, that all runoff would be the same as pre-construction. And then the, and then this plan came, and it said, now he's only responsible for the buildings and the driveway, and that's all he has to take care of. So the water coming off the hill hits his 20-foot, you know, section behind the building. It's gonna add to that, but that doesn't matter, because the water coming off the hill will increase the rate of flow of what's his responsibility of, is that 20 feet right behind his building. And it, to me, it's ludicrous, it just does not make any sense that he is changing the slope of the land that used to be responsible for slowing that water down to the ditch, and he's only putting in a plan that will increase the speed. And if that was gonna be the case, we're feeding the ditch, which goes all the way down, you know, to the apartments and the houses, and all those people should've been informed by the city that this plan is actually gonna affect, if we have heavy rains, it's gonna affect that ditch all the way down the line, all the way down to Roundtree Branch. So, that frustrated me when I got home. And yes, you- you have to look at this, the plan, the, um, stormwater and erosion control narrative, you have to read that very, very carefully before you make your vote, please, because there's, there's language in there that is not clearly stating, this does not meet codes, it's once again, just good enough. And that just good enough is gonna affect people's lives. And it's not his life, because he doesn't live there, it's the people's lives that pay the taxes in this city. Um, the garden, the only other thing I wanna mention is the garden placement was underwater, like she said, three times last year, so having that garden there is not gonna control the water from his buildings or his driveway, because it's gonna be underwater in any major rain event, like we have been having for the last two, three years. So, I do really appreciate your, you know, giving us an opportunity to speak about this, and any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council about this?
Joe?
Go ahead.
Our stormwater ordinance, um, requires people to handle the runoff on their lot, right?
I would just talk about stormwater.
Yes.
On their lot?
Yes.
What it, how does it speak to runoff onto people's lots from other? Does it-
It- it allows for them to either manage it or divert it, and these folks have chosen to divert it, uh, rather than, rather than treat it.
So-
Yeah.
This is within our ordinance? It says they can either treat, they can either handle the water coming onto their lot, or they have to handle it in some way, they can divert it, or they can treat it?
The- the water that is not generated from their lot, correct?
The water generated from their lot, they have to handle.
Correct, yes, you're correct.
And how long has that ordinance been in effect? Because I think, you know, part, unfortunately, this situation has developed over years when people put in houses and developments that didn't have to function, or didn't have to meet those requirements. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, so, this water exists at this amount because upstream from this, or up the watershed from this, there have been developments where there aren't rain gardens, and there aren't other ways of taking care of the water.
Correct.
That's what I thought. So now we have an expectation that this person should handle all the, all the earlier problems.
Does anyone have any comment or question on this? All right, this will- Sorry? Sure, go ahead.
I think the neighbor's expectation would be that the building that is going to be put on the lot does take into a, you know, into that, like, right, like, right now, it would be like if you approve it, it's saying that it's okay for one more person to allow a vast, you know, to only be responsible for what he is disrupting right now. I think there's more responsibility there, and the responsibility, I think, would also be on your shoulders as a city council, because this, this building does not have to be this large, it can be downsized. It does not need to cover as much as it does, and that rain garden could be moved to another area, but even by the plan that they gave you, that you, if you read it carefully, it's, it seriously states, there isn't any more room on that lot to even do anything with the rain, you know, with the, with the runoff. So I- I think there, there's gotta be some leeway here of something that this doesn't have to be just the plan, I hope anyways, for the sake of us and the people downstream. So, thank you.
Right, unless there are any more comments, this will come back next time for action. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Second.
Motion in the second, and we'll vote.
Fine?
Yes.
Frances?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion, Chris?
Thanks, everybody.